Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the March 4th, 2024 Meeting of the City of Pacifica Planning Commission. This meeting is called to order. May I please have a roll call?
Commissioner Devine.
Present.
Commissioner Godwin.
Present.
Chair Hauser.
Present.
Vice Chair Leal.
Present.
Commissioner Wright.
Present.
Great. Commissioner Godwin, can you please lead us in a salute to the flag?
Sure.
Thank you, Commissioner Godwin. Before we get into administrative business, any member of the public wishing to make public comment on an agenda item should complete a speaker card and bring it to the front and hand it to staff. On the card, please indicate the agenda item number on which you wish to speak or oral communications for items not on the agenda. For those of you watching remotely tonight, the Zoom function, which means the phone function as well, is not working. So participation tonight will be live, but you may also watch this meeting on PCT on channel 26. Public meetings are a limited public forum, meaning that there are rules for commenting at these meetings. Comments on non-agendized items must address matters within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Planning Commission, and comments on agendized items must relate to that specific item. If comments do not fall into one of these categories, the city will provide you with an initial warning to stay within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city or on topic. If the warning is not followed, the chair will direct the city clerk to cut off the microphone, and throughout this warning system, the chair will seek the assistance of the city attorney in identifying comments not related to the agenda item or not within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. And that, I believe, takes us into administrative business. So I do not have any speaker cards up here on anything at all. If there are speakers on administrative business, please hand your card to staff. Okay, seeing none. Would anyone like to approve the order of the agenda? Vice Chair Leal.
I'll make a motion to approve the order of the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Wright. Please vote.
That motion passes unanimously.
Okay, great. Moving right along to the minutes of December 4th. Would anybody like to make a motion on the minutes, or does anyone have comments on the minutes? Well, I am happy to make a motion to approve the minutes of December 4th. Does anyone have a second? Seconded by Commissioner Godwin.
I'll second it.
Thanks. All right, let's vote on that.
That motion passes unanimously.
Fantastic. I don't believe we have a designation of liaison to City Council.
Correct.
Okay. Then we will move into oral communications. This portion of the agenda is available to the public to address the Planning Commission on any issue within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission that is not on the agenda. The time allowed for any speaker will be three minutes. Does anyone wish to speak on items that are not on the agenda tonight? All right, seeing none, we will close oral communications and move on to our regularly agendized items. So that brings us to our consent calendar. There are two items on the consent calendar tonight. Would anyone on the commission like to pull an item? Oh, I'm sorry. I believe we have some conflicts of interest. Ms. Sharma, can you please let us know how to logistically proceed?
Sure. Madam Chair, the commissioners who have conflicts of interest for any items on the consent calendar should state their conflict at this juncture, and then they may remain seated, assuming that no further discussion is had on the item.
And if the conflict is for one item but not the other, should we call for two separate votes?
That's not necessary, Chair. What I would recommend is that the commissioner with a conflict state which item that they are conflicted on, and it's noted for the record, and state for the record that they are recusing for that particular item, and then it will be noted in the records of the commission.
Okay. Vice Chair Leal, I see your hand is raised.
I'm gonna abstain from voting on item number two due to ownership of real property within 500 feet of that location.
Okay, thank you, Vice Chair Leal. Commissioner Godwin, is this your light as well?
No.
No? Okay. Okay, fantastic. So with that, do any commissioners wish to pull an item off of the consent calendar? Okay, seeing none, do any members of the public have comments on the consent calendar? All right, seeing none, I believe now we would vote. Do we need to vote by roll call, since there's not a abstain button? Okay. Fantastic.
And it's a recusal for the record, so.
Perfect. All right, please vote.
And that motion passes with four in favor and one abstention recusing for a conflict of interest.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right, that brings us to new public hearings. File number 2024-003 Temporary Use Permit, TUP-1-24, and Coastal Development Permit, CDP-458-24, to maintain a temporary structure to enclose Ocean Shore Railroad Car Number 1409 and performance of restoration work on the railroad car on a portion of an existing city-owned parking lot at 1910 Francisco Boulevard. May we please have a staff report?
Good evening. Stephanie Servantes, Senior Planner with the Planning Division. I will be presenting file number 2024-003 Temporary Use Permit for the historic railroad car number 1409 at 1910 Francisco Boulevard. The project site is located on Francisco Boulevard bounded by Salada Avenue and San Jose Avenue. The project site has a 1980 local coastal land use designation of commercial, a 2040 general plan designation of mixed-use center, and a stoning designation of neighborhood commercial coastal zone combining district. The Pacifica Historical Society has been maintaining, has maintained and stored the railcar within the city over the last few years, including at the city's Calera Creek Water Recycling Plant and the Viamar Center. On January 17th of last year, the Planning Commission approved Temporary Use Permit 1-22 to install and restore the railcar at the 1910 Francisco Boulevard location. That approval allowed the planning director a one-time extension of up to six months, which was granted in July of 2023. That permit expired on January 17th of 2024. At that time, the Pacifica Historic Historical Society applied for a new Temporary Use Permit at the same location to continue the restoration work. There are no further temporary site improvements beyond what was previously approved. The railcar will remain under the existing tent and behind the existing fencing, and the restoration work will include work on the roof, new windows, and new flooring. This is the site plan of the current location. No changes are proposed. The proposed project involves a temporary use of an existing parking lot to support restoration of an important historic resource, which is supported by the general plan. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve the project as condition. I am available for questions, and the applicant is also present tonight and prepared to respond to questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does the applicant have a presentation? I know they're here to respond to questions, but do they have a presentation tonight?
They do not have a formal presentation.
Okay. Do any commissioners, before I open to public comment, do any commissioners have questions for staff or the applicant?
I have the same question for both. It's a rather easy question. I was just wondering how you guys fared with all the winds.
We didn't have any problems, did we?
No.
Good to hear it, thank you.
I want to tell you Kathleen is the engineer on this project. I'm just the fireman that keeps the engine running and the train on the track. So if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
We appreciate that. I think we do have some additional questions, if you wouldn't mind sticking at the podium. Vice Chair Leal.
My first question was related to weather and if there's been any damage to kind of the structure in the weather. Sounds like it not. My second question is related to any, I know it's been there for about a year or so, any issues with vandalism or anything else that were around that site?
No, we're very pleased to say we haven't.
We did fence the interior perimeter of the train and placed a lock gate. We haven't had an instance of any vandalism.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I've got a couple.
Commissioner Godwin.
Yes. I think it's important when you run projects like this, you benchmark against other teams doing similar work. A couple of benchmark points I came up with is the subway system in New York. It is also working with, you know, a system that's 119 years old, rebuilds 1,100 cars a year. It takes them about two weeks a car. The railroad industry in general has several contractors that do this for a profit, and they rebuild depending on, you know, how many cars were manufactured, multiples of 12 to 15 years ago, about 50,000 to 80,000 cars a year. And they generally quote less than five weeks to rebuild a car. Now, you guys have had this car for 10 years, and the rebuild job is not done. Why is this project proceeding so slowly?
All right, the reason was we were maintaining the renovation of the Little Brown Church. If you remember back, I believe it was in 2004, 2005, when we signed the lease with the City of Pacifica to completely renovate the Little Brown Church. This was entirely a volunteer effort, and I have a list of what the things we had done to that restoration, looking back. First, we had tackled, they said that the roof needed replaced. A local contractor came in and put in a glue-lum beam and shored up the rafters, and he said, now you need a new roof. The low bid on the roof was $35,000, and we had $15,000 in the bank. This began our period of fundraising. Then the Bell Tower Foundation was leaning. Again, we fundraised and fixed that problem. The city said we had to make the building ACC/ADC acceptable. We did that with a platform lift. All of this work was done step by step, fundraising by fundraising, and we did that. And we're following these guidelines in renovating the Ocean Shore Railroad car.
And may I add, we don't have access to public money either. It's all money that we have to raise ourselves.
We put nearly $400,000 into the Little Brown Church, which is a city-owned building.
I have a couple of questions.
I've got one more.
Oh, you have one more? Please.
Yes. A lot of businesses, whenever they have issues with getting things done, or they appear to be moving much more slowly than other people, outsource the work to another group that is, has more efficient or more effective at doing the work. Has your organization considered outsourcing refurbishing the car to a company with significant experience at doing this type of work?
We had a gentleman from the Cable Car Museum that came down, gave us some advice and said he would help if needed. This would be, of course, pro bono work. We also have an architect that's pro bono, but we pay our general contractor and one employee at the current time. But with the bad weather we've had since January and the rain and everything, they have not been working full-time. I think last month it was something like 28 hours.
Is that it, Commissioner Godwin?
Yeah, I'm finished.
Okay. My questions are somewhat for staff and somewhat for the Historic Society, so I'm going to start with staff, but may flip it over to you guys. So Director Murdock, is the, is the, does the city need the area, the land that's being used in this Temporary Use Permit?
Good evening, Commissioners, Planning Director Christian Murdock. Yes, the city will eventually need this land. The railcar in its current location is occupying a number of parking spaces, which are factored in part towards compliance of the Civic Center off-street parking requirements. The city has made accommodation and allowed for the railcar to be placed here for renovations where it's currently located and is subject to the consideration for this permit in anticipation that the restoration work should be done by this point, prior to the reopening of the Civic Center. And so it would not be ideal on a long-term basis for this railcar to remain in its current location while the Civic Center is operational. With that said, the number of spaces is relatively few, I think perhaps as few as three, and Senior Planner Servantes can identify me. The Civic Center project was overparked with the Salada Lot Spaces, but I think is slightly underparked. Actually, it's six spaces short of the off-street parking requirement with the railcar in its current location.
With the timeframe, so clearly with the recommendation of staff to approve, this is a single six-month extension, right?
With an option to extend an additional six months for good cause.
Okay. So I think that was kind of where I was going with this, is clearly staff has analyzed this against our own schedule for the Civic Center and has made the analysis that six months is fine, the planning director can do an additional six-month extension, knowing that construction, you know, schedules, especially with the weather we're having, are subject to change. Would it be wise to change that to discretionary, to planning director discretionary extensions?
It's something I'm open to as an administrative matter. I think we would want Assistant City Attorney Sharma to offer an opinion as well. Currently, the Temporary Use Permit Regulations in the Municipal Code don't provide for this type of extension. The City Council and Planning Commission have supported this administrative extension functions, given the extraordinary importance and value of this resource.
Yeah.
You know, to extend that further, you know, I would need to consult with Assistant City Attorney Sharma.
And the city's municipal code rests the authority with the Planning Commission, and so the Planning Commission could then delegate that authority back to the.
To the director.
Correct. And so however many extensions that it pleases, the commission can be delegated to the planning director.
So then, Ms. Gibbs, I would defer that question to you. Would it be helpful to have the six months and instead of one extension, to have two extensions if the planning director would allow for it?
Well, we can try. We have purchased the windows, 72 windows. We have them in storage, ready to be installed when the train has finally moved. We also, a week ago Saturday, went to Petaluma to the Northwestern Railroad Historical Society's train yard and viewed a set of vintage trucks. We did not purchase them at that time, but the contractor's going up and look at them again next week. We have searched all over for vintage trucks or wheels, and this is our last opportunity to purchase a set. They do have some heavy bolts that have to be removed and the oak framing replaced, and then sandblasted, and of course, a drage firm hired to haul them to Pacifica. So we are coming along. It just takes time.
Yeah, and that kind of speaks to kind of where I'm going with this, which is a question for you. It seems to me, and it has to align with the construction schedule, but it seems to me that it would benefit you to have an additional six months beyond what you're proposing. So I'm wondering if you would agree that having extra time would be helpful, so that you don't have to come back and do, you know, I don't want you to have to go back and do this process again. Would you like extra time?
We can try. I don't know.
I don't think she.
All I can say is that we can try in six months. It's a tough schedule.
Chair, am I understanding your suggestion to actually provide more time for the project to be completed?
Yes.
Yeah. No, I think we would really need more time than six months.
Okay. Okay, that answers my questions. Commissioner Devine, I didn't even see, I didn't ask if you had any. No, no questions. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Well, at this point, I will then open to public comment. I do not have speaker cards, but I see a lot of folks here, so if anyone wishes to speak now, it'd be a time to bring a speaker card up to staff, or you could start at the podium and then bring your speaker card to staff. Okay. Then I will close the public comment period and bring it back to the commission. So.
Chair, could I just offer a remark, please?
Yes.
In relation to the second six-month extension that the planning director may be authorized to grant, I think it would be good for the record to indicate this is a very critical phase in the restoration project, and the additional time may be justified under the extraordinary circumstances to prepare and move the railcar to its final location. It's envisioned that it would remain on this site, but in a different location that would have fewer parking impacts. And so that additional coordination, detailed construction drawings, construction and actual relocation, coordination with the city might justify that in this very unusual and very valuable historical resource context.
Well, and so I'm just one commissioner, and I think we should deliberate on it, but my feeling is that we very much support the Historic Society, and we want to see them be successful, and I am personally willing to grant the director full discretion on how long and where. So.
And Chair, I think I should just clarify one point. I think it's easy to think of us as the city, but the Planning Commission is performing a particular function here as a regulator in terms of the permit. Let's also remember the city, through the city manager and city council, has landowner authority in the event that the city should, for whatever reason, feel like less time is appropriate. So there is a secondary component for the city to manage the duration of this project or its ultimate disposition. Just wanted to clarify that for the commissioners as well.
That's helpful nuance, Director Murdock. In light of that, is there, is there more that would need to be put into a condition of approval if we're changing the condition of approval?
I don't think so. Just to, you know, we could write in language about the relocation, but do you think it's necessary? No, I think the only thing we believe would be necessary would just be to direct changing the condition of approval to reflect two six-month extensions. If deemed necessary, to complete the project and the relocation.
Okay. Is this, sorry, the council names are still on here. Is this you, Vice Chair Leal? That's your old one. Okay, does anyone have any deliberation? Concerns? Motion? Vice Chair?
I'll just add a comment that, given that this has not been a nuisance or they've had any issues at its current location, I'd support the recommendation to include a discretionary six-month, or another six-month extension on top of what's already in the, in the report tonight.
I would agree.
Absolutely. I mean, the weather has been abhorrent the last few years, so I can't imagine the challenges that they faced, and it would just be a shame to not, to not grant the two extensions.
So would anyone like to make a motion? I am happy to.
Can we make a motion to approve the two six-months extensions? Can we make a motion to approve the two six-months extensions?
Is that motion formulated the way you need?
We can read the recommended motion, and Commissioner Devine can modify that if desired to authorize the two six-month extensions. The recommended motion is that the Planning Commission finds the project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, approves Temporary Use Permit, TUP-1-24, and Coastal Development Permit, CDP-458-24, by adopting the attached resolution, including conditions of approval in Exhibit A, with a modification to Condition Number Two, to allow the Planning Director to grant two six-month extensions, and incorporates all maps and testimony into the record by reference.
Perfect. Thank you.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, let's all please vote.
And that motion passes with four votes in favor and one opposed. Commissioner Godwin voting no.
Well, congratulations on your Temporary Use Permit. We appreciate everything that you do. So that concludes new public hearings. I believe we're on to commission communications. Does anyone have a commission communication?
Only to say that I'm very appreciative of having seen staff at the training on Thursday night about the new laws on their own time. Also, I have a better understanding after Saturday's meeting of exactly how much work is going on with staff to prepare for a lot of things, other than what we're hearing tonight. And it's been very busy. They completely surpassed my expectations in terms of the work quality. The load, I think, is a bit more than we should expect from them, but I've been very appreciative and impressed with their level of professionalism, and I want to thank them.
Any other commission communications? So I just want to remind folks that Saturday is goal-setting. I'm sure Director Murdock will remind people of that as well. But I also wanted to take a moment to acknowledge the passing of Director Jack Burgett from the Water District, who was just a huge staple of the community, attended all of our meetings as our liaison, and he's a huge, his absence will be so felt and is a huge loss. So, yeah. Okay. Director Murdock, on to you.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening again, Commissioners. So as Chair Hauser noted, this coming Saturday, March 9th, starting at 9:00 a.m., the City Council will undertake its annual strategic planning and goal-setting process, where it will, for the first time this year, have a follow-up evaluation of the strategic plan and work plan that the City Council adopted last year. So this will be going into year two of the new strategic planning process. So very interesting opportunity to see where we're measuring up, or where additional efforts needed to implement the City Council's strategic plan. Again, starting at 9:00, and it will be here in the council chambers at 2212 Beach Boulevard. I do want to look backwards briefly to last Saturday. Commissioner Wright alluded to it, a very important meeting held by the City Council for the city's local coastal land use plan update. So it was a give-or-take seven-hour meeting on Saturday to provide a listening and learning session for our community that they've asked for to understand more about the LCLUP update process. A lot of great questions from the community, great opportunities for the staff to provide answers to try to improve the community's understanding and the council's understanding, so everyone can participate effectively in this process. So the outcome of that meeting was to have another Saturday session, upcoming date to be determined, to shift into more of a City Council consideration and determination and direction phase. We're trying to determine with the City Council where we should go next in response to the Coastal Commission's suggested modifications to the LCLUP. So more information forthcoming. Anyone that wasn't able to make it, or just wants to watch it again, or dive into the staff presentation materials, those are all posted now on the planpacifica.org webpage under the Resources and Project Documents page. And then lastly, we're in the season of the annual Form 700 Financial Disclosures and Conflicts of Interest, period. And so for those that may be less familiar on the commission, you should be getting an email from the city clerk's office or from our vendor net file. So with everyone's heightened sensitivity to cybersecurity and so forth, I did want to confirm the city does use a third-party company net file, where you log on and file these digitally, as opposed to the prior paper-based process of the past. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, with that, do we have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Or we can hang out?
Motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, please vote.
And that motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, everyone.